Thank you for coming. We're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the meeting notice dated January 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the deus and return it thereafter.
Roll call?
Mr. Boyer. Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. Pulaski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Mr. Barton. President Allen.
Here. Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Captain Beaker. Chief Feathers.
He shall present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed session meeting of December 19th, 2023?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, Madam Mayor, going to your report.
Thank you. Okay. I've been enjoying my first few weeks as your mayor, and I appreciate everyone that's taken time to stop by City Hall and say hello or share your thoughts and concerns when I'm out in the community. As a reminder, my office hours are here at City Hall Monday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 12:00. And I'm considering adding either an afternoon or an evening in the next month or so. You can also email me at efagan@cityofsummit.org, and we can arrange a time to meet or speak by phone. I will also be working with the Communications Office to release a video update every Monday on city news initiatives, events, and other timely topics. These videos will be posted on my mayor's page on the city website and social media channels, including Facebook and YouTube. I look forward to sharing them with you. Last Monday, I had the privilege of attending all of the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service events that were being held around town. It was wonderful to see and meet so many young people and families that were serving the community, from the cards that were made for sage and hospital workers to lunches and toiletries that were packed, seeing eye puppies that I met, to conversations about the issues about Martin Luther King Jr., champion, and how we all need to add more kindness into our lives. It was truly a day of action and giving. A big thank you to everyone that volunteered and to Shaping Summit Together and Annette Dwyer, the organizers of the event. And last Friday, several council members and I were proud to participate in a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the opening of the EMPATH, which is the Emergency Psychiatric Assessment, Treatment, and Healing Unit at Overlook Medical Center, the first of its kind in New Jersey. This unit, specialized unit, takes behavioral emergency patients out of the emergency department and into a setting in which they will get the appropriate care more quickly. I was once again reminded about how fortunate we are to have Atlantic Health System as a community partner and Overlook as a resource for enhanced patient care. I also have one other thing I'd like to say, which is, as you know, there was significant public interest in what the prior council wanted to do with Broad Street West properties, as well as a significant public concern about the process that was being used. This council recognizes that there is still work to do regarding the existing firehouse on Seventh Cedar Street and our continuing affordable housing goals. Additionally, the discussion needs to be transparent and inclusive of community input. To that end, I will be setting up a working group that will continue to study the possibilities for those properties and how best to continue working towards our affordable housing goals. I'll have more information for you on this working group at upcoming council meetings, so please stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Business Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give a brief storm report. We've had a couple of mild winters, so it's been a while since I've had to do this. But over the last couple of weeks, Summit and the broader region experienced significant snow and ice conditions. The city implemented specific snow and ice control measures during the storm last Tuesday that included applying 6,000 gallons of brine to roads prior to the storm, use of 250 tons of salt to prevent icy conditions, and 288 staff hours of plowing. The Division of Public Works, who I thought did a fairly good job given the circumstances and the conditions, was responsible for snow and ice removal on 68 miles of city streets. This responsibility did not extend to county roads. For snow and ice control on specific routes like 78, 124, and 24, the responsibility falls to the State Department of Transportation. This indicates a coordinated effort between different levels of government, city, county, and state, to manage the storm's impact effectively. The city used various communication channels such as its website, social media, and emergency alert systems, SMART, 911, and NICSIL, to inform residents about snow removal efforts and safety and snow removal guidelines. When residents were advised to remove cars from city streets during plowing operations, both the Broad Street and Tier garages were available at no cost over the weekend. We continue to refine our efforts, conduct post-storm evaluations, and we've met with Mayor Fagan and members of council and staff to help identify ways to do better and improve operations. Snow guidelines with snow removal ordinance and parking information are posted on the city website for further review. So on to the next item, Hometown Heroes Program. Enrollment is now open for its 2024 Hometown Heroes Program. The deadline to apply is March 31st this year. This will be the seventh year for the successful program that displays banners with names, images, and dates of service of active military members and veterans on city streets from mid-May through mid-August. The program is funded through private donations with no fee to participate. Information on application requirements and how to apply is available at cityofsummit.org/hometownheroes. And then lastly, just the PAL ping-pong tournament will be held on Friday, February 2nd, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. The competition is open to children in grades five through eight and will feature music and entertainment, pizza, light refreshments, and prizes. Ping-pong balls and paddles will be provided, but competitors may bring their own to use. Registration through Civic Rec is required. There is no fee to attend. Please go to summitycommunityprograms.com for more information and to register. And that's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. I am thrilled to address you tonight at our first regular business meeting of 2024. It has been rewarding to witness each member of our council setting in to their respective committee roles with such enthusiasm and dedication. Council members, your commitment is commendable and a vital force in moving our city forward. We have important work planned this year. Our priorities are clear and focused with the well-being and prosperity of our community at the core. Safety remains a paramount concern for us, and community engagement will be at the heart of our endeavors. Your voices, ideas, and feedback will be the guiding light for our decisions and our actions. We are committed to fostering a deeper connection with residents and business owners alike. It's important to share that in December, the Clerk's Office and the communication team held a well-attended and successful knowledge-sharing workshop session for the chairs of the city boards and committees. It was an opportunity for the chairs to understand the mission of each group, understand the synergies between them, and hopefully establish productive relationships for future project work. We look forward to doing another one soon. I hope you do too, Rosemary. I am pleased to announce in February, we're going to be launching a community-wide survey and looking forward to feedback from all of you, the community, on your thoughts and what your priorities are. We will also host a town hall meeting in the spring, which will be an additional opportunity for the public to comment and questions for council and staff. And these are just going to be a few of the initiatives that we're implementing as a part of a larger community engagement plan. Your support and participation are what make our council effective and our community exceptional. I look forward to a year of meaningful achievements and shared successes. I'd also like to congratulate Annette Dwyer and the Shaping Summit Together team and committee on an incredibly successful and meaningful Martin Luther King celebration this weekend. The sessions, gatherings, and volunteering brought everyone together in a personal and connecting way, and it is a fitting way to honor a man who believed in progress through peace and made an immeasurable impact on all of us. His legacy lives on in events like these, so thank you to that committee. I do want to mention that on February 12th, the city is having their Affordable Housing Committee meeting. It's listed on the website, and that's going to be a public meeting. I know that affordable housing is definitely on everybody's mind. One of the first actions that I took actually before Council President is I made sure that tonight in our first business meeting tonight that we met with Joe Burgess, who is our planner, Nancy Holmes, who is our affordable housing attorney, and Matt Delory, who is our city employee, that helps manage affordable housing to find out what do we need to do to kind of close out this round and plan for the future. So we are taking it very seriously. With that said, I would like to get to the really important part, and that is our swearing in. Mayor Fagan, you will do the honors of swearing in our three probationary firefighters.
I got this.
Yeah?
Thanks all for coming. I appreciate your being here. Just wanted to give a little recognition to members of the audience today. We have members of the Oval Fire Department joining us, members of Chad and the Garwood Department. It's always great to see the firemen and supporters. All's glad to do, but the town chief, David Guida, his last day of service was today. We're going to party tomorrow. I'm very pleased to hear that. And as the firemen say, we have freedom. Just want to tell the families, we'll be in good hands. We'll give them the tools and training they need to get home safe every day, and we'll take care of them. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Okay, so I'm new here. This is my first one. Hopefully I do it right. First, I'm going to tell you about Jerome Palmer Jr. Jerome Palmer Jr. became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in June 2023 and served in the Volunteer Division's Hook and Ladder Company, number one. Jerry has completed firefighter one and two. He's also been an active member of the Garwood Volunteer Fire Department since 2021. Jerry holds several safety certifications. Hazardous material awareness, yeah, make yourselves comfortable, hazmat operational competencies 6.2 and 6.6, hazardous materials, Operation Core, Incident Command Systems, ICS 100 and 200, and Stop the Bleed, American College of Surgeons Committee on Trauma. Congratulations to Jerry on your appointment to career firefighter with the Summit Fire Department. Repeat after me. I, Jerome Palmer.
Jerome Palmer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties of the position of probationary firefighter.
Perform all the duties of the position of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
David, can you take pictures for them? Yeah. We're going to take a picture. Mary, do you want to get in? Mayor. There you go. That's it. Congratulations.
William Malik became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in June 2023 and served in the Volunteer Division's Training and Learning Company, number two. Will has completed firefighter one and two and has received training in N R E M T in 2022. He's also an active member of the Old Wick Volunteer Fire Department since 2017 and was promoted to Second Lieutenant in 2023. In May of 2023, Will graduated from Meridian University with a BA in Business Management. Will holds several safety certifications, National Incident Management Systems, NMS, 700 and 800, Incident Command Systems, ICS 100 and 200. Congratulations, Will, on your appointment to career firefighter with Summit Fire Department.
I, William Malik, do solemnly swear.
I, William Malik, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And last, Colin Kidd. Colin Kidd became a volunteer with the Summit Fire Department in June 2023 and served in the Volunteer Division's Cozengin, number two. Colin has completed firefighter one and two. He's also been an active member of the Chadon Volunteer Fire Department since 2017. Colin holds several safety certifications, Incident Command Systems, 100 and 200, National Incident Management Systems, Fire Inspector, Hazardous Materials Responder Level One and Two, Hazardous Materials, Operation Core, Hazardous Materials Awareness, Bloodborne Pathogens, Vehicle Rescue Operational Level, Machinery Rescue Awareness Absence Technician Levels. Congratulations, Colin, on your appointment to career firefighter with the Summit Fire Department. I, Colin Kidd, do solemnly swear.
I, Colin Kidd, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
Of the position of probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Very good. Very good. Congratulations to everybody. Congratulations to the family and to our fire department. Our family's getting bigger.
Thank the council for supporting us. You always fill our vacancies. Appreciate all the support with the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, thank you. All right. Okay. Should we? Yeah.
Yeah, he wants a minute before.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, announce.
Oh, everybody can, we're going to take a couple of minutes just to let everybody get out and leave the room. Okay, go ahead. We just need two minutes.
Now, skip.
Yeah.
You're all by yourself over there, Kevin. You and Rod, you guys should scooch together. Stay in there or are you going to party?
Okay. Do I have to hit this again? Yeah. All right. You have to really hit this.
You do, you have to.
Yeah. Okay. We are on to the public comments section. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the cityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. And when you come to the lectern, please state your name and address clearly. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Fagan, Council President Allen, members of common council. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue. And I'd like to start by saying I was pleased to see the continuation of the tradition of awarding chairs to the outgoing mayor and members of council. The chair that's in my home study is the one that was given to my father at the very beginning of 1976 to recognize his 15 years of service as a councilman, council president, and mayor. And I hope that the retiring council members will enjoy their chairs as much as I'm enjoying my father's. Now, let me get to the reason I'm here. I'm here to talk about Summit's debt level, which is excessive despite the AAA credit rating. The latest unemployment and inflation data suggests that the Fed isn't going to lower interest rates anytime soon, but the city should not be making plans by trying to second-guess the Fed. In 2023, the budget snapshot placed Summit's debt at $65.57 million, nearly at parity with the municipal budget. 10% of the municipal budget is debt service. At the December 13th, 2023 budget meeting, Treasurer Tammy Baldwin presented a 2025 debt service schedule of $7,92,846, and roughly 2/3 of that figure is the payment to principal and 1/3 goes to interest. But there's a window of opportunity. A popular talk show host advising individuals on getting out of debt recommends a strategy that applies equally to municipalities. He calls for setting aside a recurring amount to first pay off the smallest debt. When that debt is gone, you have less interest expense and more to apply to the next smallest. Here, we start with a debt service of $7 million, which we will have to pay anyway in 2023. If we commit to keeping the line item for debt service fixed at the $7 million level, we pay down an extra $267,632 in principal in 2026, and that may look like a grain of sand on the beach compared to $65.57 million of debt, but 100% of the extra payment goes to principal and retires a recurring interest obligation. In 2027, the additional amount becomes $836,781. In 2028, $270,627. And in 2029, $468,107. For those four years, we retire $1,842,147 in principal that we would not otherwise have retired, or close to 3% of the debt. And recurring interest goes down. We could even start this year and reduce the debt principal by $132,260. If we shave the proposed capital improvement plan without unnecessarily deferring capital costs, we could make even more progress. And if we sell an asset such as the current fire headquarters property and put it on the tax rolls, we need to apply 100% of those proceeds to debt amortization. At the capital budget meeting, I suggested a public-private partnership for recreation projects, as we did with the Summit Tennis Association, as a tax-efficient method to raise capital. We could run the project through the Summit Foundation to make contribution. We could run the project through the Summit Foundation to make contributions tax-deductible. We may not start with the smallest debt first, but instead call or partially call the bonds with the highest interest rate. Or we could borrow less for the next capital project and pay more in cash from the funds we gain by freezing debt amortization at a higher level. Either way, the result is less municipal debt. The initiative has to come from this and future councils. This council cannot bind future councils, but if this council were to adopt a resolution to embark on the track that I'm proposing, future councils would sense themselves bound to stay on course. If this council agrees with this framework, we have a talented city administration to make the plan work. So please let me know how I could help in drafting a resolution or in some other way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, at 11 Sunset Drive. Council should move quickly to enact an ordinance providing permanent seasonal closure of Maple Street between Union Place and DeForest Avenue. 2023 was a natural experiment, allowing the city to compare Summers with and without the Maple Street closure. Merchants throughout downtown reported lower sales and less foot traffic. We all noticed the lack of energy and fun. Downtown Summit was dark and lifeless by about 9:30 on summer weekends. As we all saw in 2022, a closed Maple Street, combined with indoor restaurant dining at capacity, allows for significant public open space. Summit Downtown has repeatedly stated that it has the funds to purchase street furniture for that public space, along with more attractive bollards to protect it. This will allow all Summit residents to enjoy a vibrant, energized downtown during the warm weather months. Two separate surveys, one conducted by you, Council President Allen, and one commissioned by SDI, have unequivocally demonstrated broad public support among residents for this initiative. Responsible leadership, as you have said, is more about just making decisions. It's about actively listening to and soliciting resident feedback and understanding the pulse of the community. So council should hear the voice of the community and move ahead with a permanent seasonal closure of Maple Street. Thank you.
Can I just make a quick recommendation? Claire, what I would have you do is send in an official email to Rosemary.
I sent moving comments last week.
Excellent. Okay, as a request? Okay.
I'll have to look again. I don't remember seeing.
Just before you canceled the meeting.
Okay, I'll look again.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, perfect. And then it'll go to a committee.
Can I make a comment? Council President, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Claire, thank you for your comments. What I would say is, I've been speaking with Director Schreger, as well as the city administrator, over the last 10 days or so. We've certainly been talking about it in our committee. It will be on our agenda going forward. And Mr. Palowski, I would say that law and labor should look at this as well, so that we're all on the same page. And I think we should certainly look at outdoor dining as well and see what the possibilities might be anywhere in Summit. So thank you for your comments.
And safety, too. Okay.
And safety, yes.
All right, thank you.
Michelle Kalmanson, 67 Butler Parkway. I was at the budget meeting workshop in December, and on the proposed budget, there was permanent lighting for Tatlock, and I asked when the neighbors could expect to hear something about that, about a plan. And I was told very soon, be looking for something in January. So we still haven't heard anything, and we're curious to know, is there a plan and when will we hear it?
Yeah. Well, but what I will say is, I mean, and I'll give this to you, Councilwoman Smallwood, but what I'll say is the capital budget is always the wish list for all the department heads. So as they go through the budget process, we'll go through what the priorities are. I know that this has been on for many, many years, so I don't know who I should kick this off to. Normally, we wouldn't go back and forth, but this is a pretty easy answer.
Mark?
Yep. Okay, Mark. Yeah. Only because the budget process generally, it's all the list of everything that everybody wants, so.
Through you, Council President? So this has been on our radar for at least two and a half years. It was a request. It was a request from me, and that's all it was. There's still a lot of input that we need to get from the neighbors. There needs to be a lot more discussions before this goes any further. So, you know, I know some folks are worried down in that area, but nothing has been officially decided at this point.
Okay.
And, you know, we're hoping within the next few weeks to, you know, announce something and have some meetings with the neighbors, maybe a month, but, you know, I don't want to be held to two weeks or three weeks. Thanks.
Councilwoman Smallwood, did you want to add anything?
I did, thank you. And thank you, Mark. Michelle, thank you for bringing that up. I did speak with a few residents over the past week regarding the proposal or the slide that was on the preliminary budget. And I did offer to meet with them, and she wanted to gather her thoughts and possibly get some other neighbors. And I'm certainly happy to meet with anyone next week, because before anything ever gets brought to council, we would certainly involve the community. And I was actually talking with Councilwoman Allen that what we want to do is really put together a subcommittee that would include residents, who would be extremely affected by this. So this, again, this is something that we're going to explore. It was on the agenda or on Mark's agenda to hopefully look into for this year. But certainly, nothing would ever come to council without any community engagement. And I'll certainly make sure that you're involved as well.
May I make a comment, Council President?
Sure.
And I would say that this has been in Councilmember Miniger and I's committee as of last year, and Andy chaired that the year before. So I think our last meeting, and that was January of 20...
Two.
The last meeting we had, I believe, Mark, was January of '22. So I haven't, we haven't talked about it much since, but, you know, certainly engage the residents, and thank you for your comments.
You know, and I just want to say one other thing. My commitment to the community is that any initiative that happens, those initiatives or projects that occur in whatever neighborhood, there will always be a subcommittee at this point. I really feel as though any subcommittee should have voices, a diverse and inclusive group of people that are affected, people who are for a project and so forth, because they really need to come to some kind of consensus before it even goes back to a larger committee that should also be on board. And then by the time it makes it to council, you feel that this has been pretty fully vetted. So that would be my goal. So I just, that's on anything, not just on Tatlock lights. So, okay.
Hi. Hey, C. Artemenko, 19 Bede Avenue. Council and David, as you're here. I know there's a big meeting tomorrow about maybe playground, and I just wanted to talk about how important it is that we move forward with this playground as it's structured with all parts in place. For those of you who don't know me, I have four kids.
Wait, can I just actually, it's on the agenda? So we're going to have, can you speak then? Only because we have it, we're in.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Sorry, Council President, is the, what's on the agenda exactly?
For the grant.
It's the grant.
It's the grant. Are you talking about the grant?
I'm talking about the most, I'm talking about the way the proposal looks. And I just want to make a quick statement on the parts that are inclusive for special needs children. So I have four kids. I had four kids in three years. When I moved to Summit, the only place I could go was the playground with all my kids. And my youngest son, who's seven and a half, who is in public school in Summit, has never been able to have a traditional playdate, a traditional playmate, or attend any sort of extracurricular classes, not TRICAN, not Adaptive at the Y. And Blue, my son, loves music. That's how he relates to other people. He actually knows songs, he learns songs, and he knows it's something that he has shared with other children. So I just, I read the plans, and my understanding is that this playground would be a really important opportunity for kids of all neurodiversities and neurotypical kids to be in the same environment. Because kids who are in classrooms that they don't get to push in, don't have the opportunity to be with other kids. And for those fortunate children who get to do everything, it's a wonderful opportunity for them to get to know other kids in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Diego Hoick, Nargal Court. Thank you, Administrator Rogers, for the update on the snow removal. Unfortunately, last Tuesday, I had to drive between Summit, Short Hills, and a bunch of neighboring towns between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. a number of times to take my kids to their various activities. And I have no way of knowing whether 6,000 gallons of rind is a lot or not, or 250 tons of salt, or the number of hours that the staff spent cleaning the streets. But what I can tell you without a doubt is that Summit had the worst streets of any town around us. And I have friends who called me, because they know I come here to council meetings, to tell me that they have been on Mountainside, in Springfield, in New Providence. And of all these towns that I just mentioned, ours were the worst streets on two inches of snow, no ice sheets. So maybe there's an opportunity to review our protocols for dealing with snowstorms, because in this one in particular, the response was ineffective. Thank you.
Do you want to take that one? Yes, I would love to. So Councilwoman Allen and I went to DPW with Director Schreger the day after the storm, I think, and sat with the DPW staff and just got educated on, you know, what goes into dealing with a storm. And we, it was quite an education, I will say. And there were a couple of things that I would take away from it. One is, you know, we haven't had a real storm for three years, so there was admittedly some rust to be kicked off, we'll say that. That was a quote from someone, I won't say who. But the reality is, what happened in that room while we were there and then afterwards was a debrief, and what we did well and what we didn't, what we could do better. Right? And so they evaluated themselves. And I will also tell you that one thing I did not know, which I thought was really enlightening, was it takes, we have, there are six routes that snowplows go through in Summit, and each route takes eight hours to clear. So that's a long time. And while they're clearing, obviously, the storm is continuing. So I think it's a little bit of a logistical nightmare, and I respect and listening to the very experienced supervisors in DPW, I will say, I was very, I was happy to be informed, and I think maybe Director Schreger can speak a little bit to this as well if he wants to. But, you know, I think there's a lot to be said for how hard these guys work. They work 18-hour shifts, you know, because they have to, and because they're trying to keep the roads as safe as possible. So.
You know, I know I'm not supposed to respond, but I will point out one obvious thing, which is, I know city staff works really, really hard, and I know how professional they are, that's not in question. The point is that perhaps our protocols are not right, because the streets in all the towns that I just mentioned earlier were pretty much cleared of snow. And once you got into Summit, and I was driving a rear-wheel-drive car, it starts fishtailing, and you really, really, really feel it. Okay.
May I make a comment, Council President?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Diego, for your comments. And I will say that this is falling in my committee with Director Schreger, and I think we spoke more in the last five days probably than, I know more about snow removal now than I really thought I would know. And we are going to be taking a very close look at this in our committee and seeing if, you know, possibly if we're short-staffed, if we can contract out some of those services. We may not be able to, it may not be feasible, but it is certainly top three priority, I would say, in our list, just looking at, you know, how effective we can be to keep all of you safe is our number one priority. And we'll be happy to let you know if we come up with any more efficiencies. So thank you. And thank you to the DPW for working so hard.
Yeah. Yeah. And safety is top priority. One thing I would say is, you know, some of these guys are in their 20s, and so they're on Facebook, too, and they see that, they feel as though, you know, that people were not necessarily happy with the job that was done. And when we met, we went and met them in person, they were like, listen, you know, we're down three people, which is not an excuse. Each route takes eight hours, each time, every zone takes eight hours, which obviously isn't an excuse. There's challenges with CDLs, right? Because now these drivers have to get a CDL. Again, not an excuse, because if other towns looked differently, then we have somewhere to close the gap for sure. And I recognize that. But what I learned the day, going and sitting with them the day after, is that there's no intent of not working, right? There's, oh, no, 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 I know, I'm just, I'm just sharing. Like, this was, this was an experience for me, too, because the first thing I think of as a resident, right? I called Aaron, I was like, did we put enough salt down? He's like, really? So I just wanted to share that. And is there anything you want to say, Director Schreger?
No, through you, Council President, and I appreciate, and we admit we could, we can improve some things, and we did have a good debriefing. We did also reach out to other towns, and you found out there was no magic equation for it. Westfield used half as much salt as we did, New Providence used double. When the storm switched over, it really kind of caught us, I don't want to say off-guard, but the switch was very hard to battle, when it went to rain, sleet, and then rain, and then snow again, is when it kind of became packed down. So it's things we'll look at. And we were also trying to be mindful of salt supply, which we did learn today, we're now struggling to get new supplies in, which is affecting everywhere. So it was a balancing act, and we will do some improvements. And, you know, everyone did work their hardest, and it was a unique storm with a new crew, so.
Right. And one other thing that I wanted to ask you is, our trucks don't allow for plowing below two inches, correct? Is that, I mean, you could, but then you would be...
You generally don't, you're just scraping the pavement, you're more likely to damage manholes or the trucks themselves, or the drivers, when you do hit something. So, so we, you know, generally, it's somewhere, anywhere one to three inches, that the plows will go down. But no two storms are alike, and this was a unique one. So it just, it just wasn't just straight-up snow, which would, which would be a lot easier, and we're more used to. So it was just the switch-over precipitation that presented some challenges.
All right. All right. Thank you, though. Thanks for the challenge.
Hi, Council President. My name is Scott Forman. I'm at 30 Elm Street, and good evening, Mayor and Council. My things, my subjects are twofold. First of all, I do want to be a counterpoint to what the other lady was talking about, the musical instruments on the Maybe Playground. In June of 2022, there was a study by SCE that recommended, they recommended having musical instruments at least 200 feet away from residences and in a place like Bryant Park, because there was less residences around, and it was more of an open area. We're being told that these instruments, which are also, if you get close to them, they have mallets, and they're large mallets that hit chimes and drums and so on, and they can be 100 decibels in a close environment. Obviously, it does, it dissipates over space, but what I'm, what I'm hearing is that these instruments are going to be about 120 feet away from our doorsteps. So concerned about the noise, and I know there will be people tomorrow looking at this. I did go and visit the ones in New Providence, and they are a little bit, they're spread out by, they're near a street, and there is one house nearby, but I don't know exactly how close it was. I didn't study the closeness of it. So my recommendation is something like maybe applying to what the study says, to putting them in Bryant Park. And also, we have some, because of the transience from the train station, being kicked out of the train station with security guards, and we shut the electricity off in the bus stop where they were living last summer, our non-taxpaying neighbors, they've started to gravitate into the park towards the Rock at Maybe Playground as well. So they're right near where the kids are, and we just want to address and make sure people are concerned with that. And also, the other, the other thing with the musical instruments, or the noise makers, or whatever you want to call them, they, at night, were concerned about people, kids that come out to the playground at night. There are, there used to be a police, sort of a patrol around 10 o'clock at night, they would drive through Maybe Playground, and I don't think they're doing that anymore. They did it a couple of years ago, maybe during the pandemic, they stopped, I'm not sure. But they, what I'm concerned about is people, the kids and so on, using those mallets to whack those things at night and have a ball. using those mallets to whack those things at night and have a ball after hours. And I don't know, there's probably no way to shut those down after hours, because they're just hanging off the things. So that's, that's what we wanted to share our concerns. And the Elm Street Condo Association has made contributions to this park project in the past, and individuals and as a unit, too. Thank you.
Well, will you both be staying? Because we're going to end up speaking about Maybe Playground, because we're going to be passing the grant, or, you know, voting on the grant tonight. So are you going to stay for the agenda? Okay.
May I ask a question? Are we, should we take all comments about Maybe Playground during the agenda item?
Yeah.
I think it's more appropriate, if I may.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to maybe, I just think it might just be more targeted. It's up to you, but I just, I don't know if we get sideways with the Maybe Playground comments until we're in that specific thing.
Do we have any other public comments? Okay, so, yeah. All right. So I'd like to close the public comments section. Madam Clerk, I'd like to go on to ordinances for introduction.
I'll read the first ordinance.
Yes, please.
Ordinance ID number 10943, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26 Stormwater Management Regulations of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new Section 26-16 Privately-Owned Salt Storage.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 10973. This is an ordinance...
43. Sorry, what was it?
10943.
10943, I apologize. 10943. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 26 of the Stormwater Management Regulations of the City, of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new Section 26-16 Privately-Owned Salt Storage establishes requirements for privately-owned salt storage and other de-icing materials. In summary, this ordinance establishes for the storage of salt and other solid de-icing materials on properties not owned or operated by the municipality privately-owned, including residents in the City of Summit to protect the environment, public health, safety, and welfare, and prescribe penalties for failure to comply. I'd like to move this ordinance for introduction.
I'll second. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. The hearing will be on February 6th. Madam Clerk, could you please read the next ordinance for safety and health?
ID number 10973, an ordinance amending Chapter 3 Police Regulations of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new Section 3-16 entitled Resident Protection.
Councilman Palowski.
And Councilwoman Boyer-Sted, who sends his regrets, he's got the flu. I'd like to introduce ordinance ID number 10973. The City of Summit, mirroring trends across New Jersey, has witnessed a continuation in crimes that threaten the sanctity of our homes, the security of our possessions, and the mental well-being of our residents experiencing this trauma. Motor vehicle thefts, burglaries, and home invasions are not just statistics in a report. They represent a direct assault on the peace and safety of our residents. This ordinance, officially known as Resident Protection, seeks to amend and supplement Chapter 3 Police Regulations of the Code of the City of Summit. It is a testament to our collective determination to combat and deter the growing menace of personal, property, and violent crimes. By establishing a new Section 3-16, we are taking a firm stance against those who had trespass with criminal intent, including acts of tampering or committing theft, unlawful taking of motor vehicles, engaging in breaking and entering, burglary, or home invasion. Our primary duty as members of the common council and as stewards of this city is to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents. This ordinance is a step forward in sending a clear message that the City of Summit is proactive, vigilant, and unwavering in its commitment to safeguarding its residents against the threats of property and violent crimes. In terms of penalties, we have proposed measures that are both stringent and just, reflecting the seriousness with which we view these offenses. We believe that the imposition of substantial fines and the possibility of imprisonment or community service will serve as a practical deterrent to would-be offenders. We look forward to a robust hearing with the residents on this ordinance February 6th and move to adopt this ordinance.
I second. Okay, roll call, please.
Council President?
Yeah.
May we make comments in the introduction?
Sure.
Is that okay?
So I, Councilmember Vartan is at a wake this evening, and he asked me to read a comment on his behalf here tonight. So I will do that, if that's okay. And then I have, I actually have some comments as well. So from Councilmember Vartan. Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to start by saying what I've said many times before. No one deserves to be the victim of a crime. The first and most important responsibility of any government is the health and safety of the people. The ongoing attempts to steal vehicles, actual theft of vehicles, attempts to break into homes, and actual burglaries are an issue that needs to be, needs to continue to be a top priority for this government, the county, and the state government. So with that baseline, I want it to be clear that I understand, appreciate, and respect the intent of this ordinance. Practically speaking, however, I believe it's in, in its current form, this ordinance will, as written, will not achieve the desired result and potentially negatively impact both residents and the police department. I'll explain why. First, just to be clear, for those in the audience and those watching at home, trespassing, attempted motor vehicle theft, motor vehicle theft, attempted burglary, and burglary are already illegal. They're in the state criminal code, and it's up to the discretion of both the arresting officer and the prosecutor to decide who gets charged with those crimes. People who attempt to steal a car or break into a house should be caught and held responsible. So what's the problem with this local ordinance? I believe, as written, this will essentially criminalize at the local level behavior that is actually quite normal. Here's a couple of examples. My house, meaning Councilmember Vartan's house, has a screen door to a covered porch, and the doorbell is on the door inside the porch. A driver on the street in front of my house gets a flat tire. The driver walks up to my driveway and inside my porch to ring the doorbell on my front door to see if I can be of assistance. What about someone who's been delivered a piece of mail that belongs to their neighbor by mistake? The neighbor they're delivering the mail to has a mail slot on the inside door. So the neighbor opens up the storm door to put the mail into the slot. Technically, as written, both of these people have just violated the new local ordinance. But, okay, if those two seem too far-fetched, how about these other examples of pretty regular activity? DoorDash, Instacart, and Amazon deliveries, they often have a walk-up driveway, pass cars, have to walk up driveways, pass cars, and open doors on porches and take pictures of what they've just dropped off. High school students, who are out raising money for the football team or for the band. All of us up here who campaigned for political office, everyone on the dais has knocked on hundreds or thousands, in my case, I'm saying that's a little, whether we're, whether we've opened a storm door, gone on to a porch, gone into a porch to ring a doorbell, or other activities, we've probably all done things that we know now would be considered an illegal violation of this local ordinance. All this is to say, there are still perfectly legitimate reasons to be going onto someone else's property. My practical concern here is twofold. First, that people are going to get the police called on them and technically be in violation of the law over what is essentially normal behavior. But second, and most important, is that by having this to deal with this, the police will be pulled away and wasting time and resources from what they're actually doing to actually patrol, prevent, and deter crime. So again, I'll reiterate, I think the intent here is good, and I totally get it. We want to be able to say, hey, look in the first business meeting, the first month we took action. We're tough on crime, I get that. But this ordinance is simply not ready. We need to do things right, not just fast. Thank you. And then my comments. So I want to echo an important piece of Councilmember Vartan's comments here. Safety and health is a top priority of government. And so reducing car thefts and home break-ins should be something we aim for at the local level, and I totally agree with that. I share that goal, absolutely. But I also agree that this ordinance is not ready for prime time right now. It needs clarification. The issues that could result in wasted police time need to be addressed. And the due diligence expected of an ordinance affecting public safety needs to be put in. Due diligence is difficult. Public safety ordinances are too important to the city to take shortcuts. Please take this back to the Safety Committee, rework the language so that it might function without unintended consequences and without wasting the time of the police. Give it the time and the effort it actually deserves. So until then, I will also be voting against this.
Any other council members?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Andy, the one thing I would say is, it sounds as though you and Councilmember Vartan think, though, any DoorDash or any Amazon, this is if someone is caught doing something illegal and a resident presses charges, correct? I mean, maybe the chief can come up here and comment, but this ordinance was fully supported and vetted through our Public Safety Committee, has the support of our police chief. And I'm proud to say that within 23 days in January, we are pushing this ordinance, and we are pushing a safer town for the residents of Summit. And I applaud Chief Zagorski, Bob Palowski, and Jemel Boyer for putting the safety of Summit first. And so congratulations, and I'm really looking forward to making our community safer. Chief, would you, would you say a few words? Is that possible, or no? I mean, they're pretty, they're pretty, they're pretty serious accusations that... I know it's not a hearing, but they're pretty serious accusations that our chief does not support this ordinance.
I think the questions are amongst the council, not perhaps getting...
Yeah.
Your call.
Well, let's finish the council comments, just because there is a hearing on this. And I don't want to get in a situation where, you know, because the public cannot comment tonight on this.
Okay, that's fine.
May I? So, three, Council President?
Hold that thought, because are you going to say something, Councilman Palowski?
Yeah. I would just say that you guys need to get a little more specific with the provisions that you have a problem with. I would dispute that many of the examples that you guys gave would actually be violations of this ordinance. And I'd be very happy to listen to any suggestions you have for revisions. And then we can, you know, determine whether we want to go forward with the vote at the next meeting. But, you know, as of the moment, you haven't said anything that would change my mind.
Okay, I just, I did. So about an hour and 35 into the meeting, you can go back, and you can, an hour and 5 into the meeting, you can watch what I said and hear exactly what the complaints are. Use those words to adjust this, to get us to possibly vote for it. But also, there was something said about accusations that the chief doesn't support that. That is out of thin air, I just want to put that out there. I never said anything about the chief supporting it. I know there was a letter in the original packet. Was there a letter in the original packet from the chief on this ordinance?
No.
There was. There was, and it was removed. Why was that removed?
It was, it was a misprint, Andy.
I'm sorry.
It was not his memo.
Right, it was too... It was, it was actually a duplication and salt. But I, with that said, I think it is an important statement, because if you, Andy, I don't, Councilman Miniger, I don't know if it would be helpful for the chief to come up, to have, to say something. Would you be, would you like that to happen? To feel more comfortable with where you're at right now?
No, I know the language of the ordinance. So I'm against the actual language, the wording.
Yeah. But do you want to hear the, for the chief of police to come up and speak?
Absolutely, yes, always.
All right, so we'll do that, then.
I'm a big fan.
This is very unconventional, because we're not in a hearing. But I think that in order for this vote, I think Councilman Miniger would like to hear from the chief of police to make sure that he is making a educated vote, or if there's anything that you can say. Chief of Police, Chief Zagorski?
Council President, real quick, can I just say, Andy, I apologize. I didn't mean to say that you, maybe my wording wasn't correct, but when you said we were going to be overreaching on the police and, and causing staff, maybe staffing problems, I just, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that our chief has fully vetted this ordinance and has the approval.
It may have been in Councilman Vartan's comments, but it was alluding to, this ordinance would cause unnecessary calls to the police, wasting police time, and I just don't see it that way.
Okay. Chief Zagorski, will you come say a few words?
Good evening. I guess regarding two of the questions that I heard, as far as it wasting our time, or residents calling more, I didn't see that as a problem. I would think that whatever the residents saw that would make them call under this ordinance, they would, they would call without the ordinance as well. I don't think it would generate any more calls. And as far as the charging aspect, when this has been discussed in the past, my, how I feel about this is that we wouldn't use this, just charge this ordinance alone. It would be in conjunction with criminal charges that pretty much mirror the ordinance charges. We wouldn't, just based on one action, seeing someone just touching a doorknob or going onto a porch, we would, before we would even charge criminally or with this ordinance, we would need more than just that, that alone. And I think the way the ordinance is written, it comes across as that's all you have to do. But then it starts naming, you know, in the course of committing a crime, like going into a house or breaking into, I mean, stealing a car. So just the action, my interpretation is just the action of grabbing a hand alone with no other factors, you know, the police wouldn't be using it to charge anybody with that.
And it's my understanding that you would actually have to be brought to a police station, like you were, you were caught in a crime. And is that accurate?
Well, technically, if you're charging someone just with a city ordinance, it's a summons on the spot and release. But I don't envision that ever happening, you know, under this ordinance. I see it as, you know, hand-in-hand with a criminal charge. Because if you meet the elements of that ordinance, you're going to meet the elements of a two-step criminal charge.
Okay. Councilman Miniger, do you have any questions for the chief?
I don't, thank you very much.
All right. Any other council comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
No.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Okay. The hearing will be on February 6th. I think we'll have a full house that night, which is good. This is actually a really important dialogue. I think that wherever you stand on this issue, safety is going to be a big focus of this year, and we're not always going to agree on everything. But we've got to be able to come together and have the dialogue and the discussions on how to solve these issues. So if we don't do it here, it's not going to get done. Okay, I'd like to move on to resolutions. Community programs and parking services, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I am pleased to present Resolution ID 10932, which seeks authorization for the submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the Maybe Playground Improvement Project under the Green Acres Jake's Law Grant Program in the amount of $750,000. If approved, this initiative will mark Summit's inaugural endeavor towards establishing a fully inclusive ADA-accessible and intergenerational playground, setting a milestone in enhancing community accessibility and engagement. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Okay. Council comments?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So this grant application, this project is long overdue, much-needed update to the playground right in the heart of Summit. It's a backyard for kids without a backyard. That's not my quote, I've heard that quote before. This renovation will make Maybe Playground the most accessible and inclusive playground we have ever seen in Summit. In fact, this grant application will include language about this anticipated level of accessibility and inclusivity. As we have heard a little bit today from a couple people, there is support for specific elements to be included in this playground, in particular sensory components such as musical instruments, that make this accessible to all kids, no matter their level of interaction or their abilities. I am in full support of including these musical instruments as well. I've mentioned it before, but I want to mention it here on the dais. I want to challenge this city, Mark, you may be hearing this for the first time, this council and the community programs team, to adopt this same level of accessibility and inclusivity as the new standard for our playgrounds, all of them. Design should lead this, should lead the design of the new, design should be led by this new standard. That is my challenge. So I think we can do that. Whether we do that by resolution or something, I think it's, it needs to be codified in some way. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm going to press pause for one second. Do you guys have a presentation, David? Or would you like to speak?
Is that ready, Chris?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to push pause on the council comments for a minute, and then I'm going to have, Mark, are you also coming up?
Yeah, I just wanted a quick statement, and then David will take care of the question.
Okay. And then we'll go back to council comments. All right, come on up.
So thank you, President Allen, Mayor Fagan, and members of council for allowing us to discuss the Green Acres Grant for Maybe Playground this evening. I'm going to let David Guida discuss Maybe Playground, the Green Acres Grant, Guida discuss Maybe Playground, the Green Acres Grant, and answer any questions that may pertain to this project. But before I bring him up, we are so close to making our dream, elected officials' dream, and the Summit residents' dream of a new state-of-the-art playground that services 100% of our community. And with council approval tonight, allowing us to apply for the Green Acres Grant gets us even closer to making our dream a reality. My colleague, Assistant David, Assistant Director David Guida, took it upon himself to meet with Green Acres down at the League of Municipalities, met with our grant writer, Karen Spicer from Millennium, and has been working with our engineering consultant to adjust the plans so they would fit into the scope of the grant. I would personally and publicly like to thank David for his hard work, dedication, and go on the extra mile to get this project done. Thank you.
David, just make sure the clicker is on, on the side.
Perfect. Let's see.
There's a little...
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Wait, maybe.
You sure it's on?
I think so.
Right and left.
This is embarrassing. Okay, it's green. It should be green, right?
Yeah.
I broke it.
Can we just, yeah.
Okay, I mean...
Yeah, that'll work.
Perfect. We can go to the next slide. That's perfect. So thank you again, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Council President Allen, Mayor Fagan, and the entire town, City Council. I think that this has been a great project. As Councilmember Smallwood alluded to, the DCP Advisory Board and Subcommittee had been working hard on this project with the city staff and engineers to develop a site plan for Maybe Playground that will achieve three goals. One, create the city of Summit's first ADA-accessible and sensory-friendly playground. The thing with this that's important to call attention to is, it's not just meeting the standard of ADA accessibility, it's exceeding the standard in being fully inclusive. With the way that the law is written, there's a certain percentage of a playground that needs to be accessible. This plan is going to bring us to be, have a playground that every element within the park is going to be accessible to every child barrier-free. The second goal is to create an intergenerational playground that will serve the needs of all community members from birth through seniors. And then the final piece is to maintain compliance with the Village Green Master Plan and the history of the park. So, a big question that surrounds this is with fundraising, obviously, because that's what we're mainly talking about here tonight. And Rosie, that's the next slide, thank you. So the project is a staggering $1.6 million. So what we're asking for tonight is approval to submit the grant in the total of $750,000 to Green Acres for the Jake's Law Grant. This includes a $250,000 match from the city. The wording in the ordinance, or in the resolution gets a little hairy, because it does say that there is an, it does say that our match is $899,000, which includes that 250 match. The reason, what being, is that the plan that we're proposing is at 1.6 million, and obviously, if we get that 750, the rest of the money has to be matched by the city or other sources that would be fundraised through the city. So just a clarification on that, because I know that that's a confusing point in the way that the resolution was written. And just an update so far on the funding to date, we have a bunch of grant funding. We want to thank the Summit Foundation publicly. They have decided to support the zip line, that's going to, the dual-lane zip line that is going to be in the park. So they are completely funding that, and we're going to be talking about it a little bit later, but there are going to be other fundraising campaigns, and we hope that other nonprofit organizations and even for-profit organizations within the city may jump on and also sponsor items within the park. So this project seems like it has been going on for a while. So in the capital budget in 2021, a study that was mentioned earlier was approved to take place to develop a plan for all of our playgrounds within the city. So then, because budgets take a while to approve for funds to become available, finally, in the spring of 2022, suburban engineers, after the project being bid out, were awarded to complete the assessment of our parks. The DCP Advisory Board and Maybe Playground Subcommittee met with suburban, who again was awarded that bid, and suburban completed their site visits with us. In the summer, we received the deliverable from suburban, and it was reviewed by the DCP Advisory Board. The Maybe Playground was selected by council at the time, and the DCP Advisory Board as the focus, as the playground really was nearing 20 years old, and it was time to refresh it. So there was a request then put in for suburban to create a schematic design for Maybe Playground. And our Subcommittee got to go on a field trip around the state. So I'm actually the Chair of the Awards Section for our State Association, and we, knowing what playgrounds have won awards over the past couple years, we visited all of them to create a plan of what our committee wanted to see in Summit, to build the greatest playground for our city. Then in the fall, we received the preliminary concept plan. We met with Trican parents to make sure that this playground was going to be inclusive for all kids with special needs. We had conversations with seniors at the community center to understand what they wanted to learn, wanted to see in the park, to ensure that we were meeting all of the requirements, or all of our goals in building this park. We sent a whole lot of feedback to suburban to ensure master plan compliance and historical maintenance. Then in the winter, we received some renderings that were in the $2 million range. We got that down a little bit, and the final assessment and recommendation plan was also received at that time. So we are, we like to say that we're 99% there. People are happy with about 99% of where this park is. There's maybe a couple elements that can be changed, and kind of want to just be clear that revisions surrounding musical elements, or any other elements that we may hear over the next couple weeks, can be changed. Any element within this plan can be changed until council votes on the specs going out for bid, or whenever, if we use state contract. There's always time to change it, and we are meeting tomorrow with the neighbors and parents with special needs. And I think the goal is to meet a compromise, because ultimately, hearing things such as the 200-foot remark within the master, within the assessment that was completed, there are changes that can obviously be made in order to meet a compromise. And that is our goal within this project, because it is such a great project. We don't want anyone to have this, any feelings or thoughts around this project be negative. So it is our commitment and our goal to find some sort of compromise, to be able to make sure that this playground becomes the greatest that it can be. And we look forward to reporting back on how that goes, and we will adapt the playground in any way possible based on feedback. We've already received some feedback that it might be nicer to have some benches within the playground, or it might be nice to have some shade over the picnic tables in particular. So those are all things that can still be adapted. So just a quick timeline going forward is quarter 1 through quarter 4 of this year, we're going to be finishing up our playground camp, our fundraising campaign, which currently you can go online and buy a bench, you can buy a brick, you can support the project, and hopefully we can raise that, those funds. We'll be reaching out to different nonprofits within town, and hoping that they may adopt different pieces within the park, and obviously working on those amendments, looking for a groundbreaking in the fall of 2024. And then in the spring of 2025, we hope to have the grand opening.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Council, I'm going to go back to council comments.
Council?
Ma'am?
Go ahead.
David and Mark, thank you very much for your presentation. And I do just want to reiterate, I did speak with Karen Spicer, who wrote the grant, and that the way it's written, as David had mentioned, we can change some elements, we can move some things around that would not affect the actual funding of the grant itself. So we do have some flexibility there. And as David mentioned, we're going to meet with the residents tomorrow evening. Scott, I hope you're going to be able to make it tomorrow. So any interested parties who would like to meet with us, we're going to meet tomorrow at Maybe Playground, I believe, at 5 o'clock. Okay. And we'd love to, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that all stakeholders are involved in this, so that we can hear both sides, and we want to make sure that, you know, we accommodate the neighbors, because I have been there and I have seen, you know, there's a, just a chain-link fence right there, right now. So within the design, there is a bunch of trees and shrubberies that's going to go there that will help bring down the sound as well. But there are other designs that we can use for the musical instruments that would even help with that. So we'll certainly talk about that tomorrow.
And you said you'll be there tomorrow for the meeting?
I'm hoping to be there. I've got somebody else that's going to be there.
Okay.
And I do appreciate David and Mark reaching out to us, and that's all, and so on. So I appreciate that feedback.
Excellent, okay. All right, thank you. All right, any more comments from council?
Yes, I just have a couple, Council President, and I got an email tonight from a resident, and I hadn't heard from him about this project, but he's a very smart resident. And he did point a few things out, and actually called Mark around 5:30, and I was just filling Andy in. But I do think that every committee, if I may suggest that, Council President Allen, should just take a look at this playground. And I didn't think, I was the Chair of this last year, so I'm really criticizing myself, because I didn't think to do this. But I think we should have safety and parking also look at the playground, for a few reasons. The gentleman actually asked a couple of good questions. One was, can we put shading over the game table areas? Can geo-block or similar treatments be used to reduce impervious areas? Are there provisions for an irrigation or sprinkler system for the proposed landscaping? Could the proposed driveways result in a lack of parking? If the proposed driveways will be used by pedestrians as mid-block crossings without proper signing, striping, and other provisions, again, we're not saying this is the case, but should water fountains be considered? Will there be any swing gates or barriers, barriers at the back line of the sidewalk in the vicinity of the driveways? The proposed planning and landscape adjacent to the driveways may block the driver's clear sight lines. Are there any requirements for restrooms, changing areas for playgrounds, and passive recreational areas? Has an accessibility evaluation for the proposed involvements been made? And consider adding bike racks? Sorry for the 11th-hour comment. But I think it was, you know, it made me think, and it made me think that maybe we should look at just a few of those things, and, you know, maybe look at it in safety and in my committee as well, and just make sure that we've, you know, really crossed every, every T and dotted every I. So, and David, thank you for all your hard work. I know I had you look at those numbers for like eight hours. It was starting to make me feel like I was not getting them right, but thank you both for all of your, your hard work.
And thank you for organizing the meeting for tomorrow. I think that was a really important step with the residents and the Subcommittee, so, okay.
And I'll forward that email along to Rosie, so she can forward it to council.
Good. Okay. Anyone else on council, council comments? No? All right, the public, any...
Good evening. Heather Pollinger, 47 Woodland Avenue, P-O-L-L-I-N-G-E-R. I speak tonight as both a resident, a early childhood expert, a City of Summit employee at the Wilson Primary Center. This musical element piece, it may seem inconsequential to some people, annoying to some people, but for a certain segment of the population, it is one of the only things that will touch them in this playground. The average autistic child responds tremendously to music. So an average playground swings, slide, the old-fashioned playground, that child doesn't get much out of that, or they do for five minutes. They get overwhelmed, they get overstimulated, or they're understimulated in their particular way. When a child goes to a inclusive playground like this, which is like a dream playground, it really is, they have multiple opportunities. First, they have a chance to play with a neurotypical child. But if they're not up to that, they have a chance to parallel play on the musical instruments. They're next to the child, but they also have the chance to retreat from an overwhelming situation without having to go sit on a bench. It's a different opportunity. It's a different type of sensory input that dramatically benefits them. Many people think of accessible playgrounds in terms of physical accessibility, and unfortunately, a lot of these children are what's considered invisible disability, which sounds like a terrible word. But what it is, is it's the, it's the person who you might think who drives the handicap car and gets out of the car, and you're like, hey, they're not handicapped, why are they in the handicap spot? But you don't know their story. There are countless children who have invisible disabilities, and a lot of them are autistic, they have behavioral challenges, non-verbal, they have all these different challenges. These kind of playgrounds, and especially the musical parts, are such a unique way for them to engage in a public space. We change playgrounds for a reason, not just because we burned our bottoms on metal slides and our children broke their legs on those spinny things. We changed them because we wanted children to be able to come together, to be able to play, literally level the playing field, make a chance where the neurotypical and the neuroatypical child could play together, and the atypical child wouldn't be playing catch-up. They might not necessarily be able to climb to the top of the big slide. They may not be coordinated enough or want to go on the swing, but they are going to want to climb and play with the more sensory-oriented pieces that will be in the playground. The other thing is, from what I saw in the official business part of this, these instruments, 150 feet, pretty much the sound, less, lower sound than a vacuum cleaner. If somebody is using these instruments at 10 o'clock at night, then the police need to come. That's not what they're there for. They're for young children. If the park is being used inappropriately in the evening, then that is an issue for somebody else on the council who deals with safety, because that's not what this playground is for. So if it's going to be abused and used inappropriately, it's the same as any other playground being used inappropriately. You drive by and you see a bunch of kids in the playground at 1 o'clock in the morning, you're going to call the police. Nothing good is happening in a playground at 1 o'clock in the morning.
In general, after 1 o'clock in the morning.
In general. So the nighttime piece, I think, could be dealt with in a different way. I don't know if it could be, the playground closes at sunset, or whatever we could do. But to use that as a reason to not have the musical components would be a disservice to this amazing part of our community. And Mrs. Artemica, who spoke earlier, her son was one of my students when he was 3 years old, and music was the game changer for him. If you wanted him to do something, you didn't bribe with candy, you didn't bribe with toys, you bribed with a song. You didn't even have to play it on a video, you could sing it to him, because that's the input that he was looking for. So I know it's, it's a little piece of this playground, but it is a really important piece. So if it takes a little adjusting to keep it, I would keep it. To lose it would really be a disservice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further public comments?
I'm Carolyn McGee, M-C-G-H-E-E, 11 Montrose Avenue. And I've lived in Summit for over 30 years. I'm here to lend support to the Maybe Playground Improvement Project, especially the sensory-friendly playground equipment. And this woman said it so much better than I could, but I'm a mom of 22-year-old twins, and one has autism. And I would have loved this playground if, when our kids were little. Playgrounds were scary experiences for us when they should have been a haven for him and a respite for me. And I, my son couldn't interact or communicate with other children, so he would wander off, and sometimes making it... so he would wander off and sometimes making it to the nearby streets. And none of the Summit playgrounds really worked for us. We ended up at the one at Wachung, the Loop Playground, because at least the roads were far enough away that I could carry one twin and run after him before he got to the street. So, anyway, children with autism are either sensory seekers or avoiders, and sometimes they're both. The sound of a vacuum cleaner was so painful to him that I couldn't use it. When he was around, I had to, my husband would have to take him out, and then I could vacuum. And not being able to speak at a young age, not being able to understand how to play with toys, made for a lot of awkward encounters with parents and kids at the playgrounds. He would have loved having some chimes or other percussion instruments to play. If these are designed for people with special needs who are hypersensitive, like my son, I can't imagine that they're not going to be beautiful to listen to. I can't imagine that a designer would be creating something that's going to be painful to someone who's hypersensitive. So I'm sure everyone would enjoy listening to them. I have some friends who've been able to enjoy these where they live, and they said it's incredible. Their chimes, and everyone loves playing them, with them. And as you've said, so lovely, music is such a great way to bring people together, and playing on equipment like this with other children your own age could generate some really happy experiences for children with special needs, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to come up? I saw you just.
Wanted to comment also, want to thank Ms. Hamlet for her communications, her communications with some of our residents as well. I know, I know she's been in touch with Annette Pfister and some other people.
Thank you.
So thank you. And I'm all for music. I'm actually a songwriter. I write songs on Zoom like three nights a week with people all over the world. The only thing, you know, and I'm not a hit songwriter, so don't ask me what the songs are. You can listen to my page on SoundCloud if you'd like. But the thing that concerns me is, you know, lower decibels. When you saw David's picture of the way that the drums, everything, I think it's facing towards us, like towards the houses, like if you, if the way that's facing right now. Maybe there's another way. We can turn it the other way, if possible. And in New Providence, I measured with a decibel meter, and it was, you know, and I was right there. And it was 100 decibels or more on the, I think, the chimes and the drums and a couple of things. And I know there's some other instruments, and I know there's other choices of things that are listed from this company. I've seen them on there, and they are at a lower level. And I'm all for giving the kids the sensory enjoyment for themselves and so on. The instruments that I, the things that I saw in New Providence, you know, when I, when I was hitting them, they didn't sound that musical to me. But there are probably some other choices, and I appreciate the council's openness to reconsidering some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. And we'll see you guys tomorrow, Scott and David. Okay. Moving on to finance. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Let me get to my section here. Thank you, Council President. This is number 10946, and this resolution authorizes the intra-budget transfer of appropriations from accounts with a surplus to those that are over. This is a regular occurrence in the last two months and first three months of a fiscal year, and this particular set of transfers totals $30,500. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Rolowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Second resolution. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10942, and this resolution authorizes the issuance of a special emergency note not exceeding $340,000. During the pandemic, many months in a row, the parking utility had zero revenue. The state allowed the Summit Parking Utility to issue special emergency notes to cover this last, this lost revenue. $850,000 in special emergency notes were issued in 2020 with the agreement that the utility would pay back that money in five years' time. At $170,000 paid back every year, this installment will be paid in February, with 2026 being the last year that we do this. I move to adopt this resolution.
Delia, do second?
A second. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
It doesn't say roll call, but if you would prefer roll call, I can do that.
Oh, I don't have roll call on my script.
Do we need a roll call?
Yeah. Madam Clerk, roll call? Oh, no.
No.
It doesn't say roll call in here. Okay. All right. Does it, does the vote stand?
Vote stands.
Okay. Just making sure. Keeping me on my toes the first night. All right. Number three, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is 10972. Per closed-session discussion, this resolution will appoint two new members to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, James Schroeder as new member and Al Leiter as co-chair. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay. Council comments? I would like to congratulate, yeah.
I just have a quick question. Did we not appoint Al at the, about later at the reorg meeting?
It's co-chairs.
Oh, we're naming co-chairs. Okay. Got it. Yeah. Thank you.
Did we skip one? We skipped number three.
I'm sorry, folks. You're right. I did. I see it right here in my notes.
So can we close out on this?
Close this one.
Okay. Wonderful. And just congratulate Mr. Schroeder and Mr. Leiter. So.
Did you vote on it?
Not yet. Roll call, please. No, we don't need a roll call. Just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number three.
Thank you. I was just very excited to get Al as the co-chair. This is number 10928, and this resolution establishes the procedure authorizing a special tax appeal attorney in consultation with the city tax assessor to file corrective appeals with Union County Board of Taxation and/or the New Jersey Tax Court. This procedure, established every year, removes the unnecessary step of having council review every single tax appeal case and authorizes action to be taken on the city's behalf and, sorry, by the city's tax assessor and by extension, the special tax appeal attorney in certain cases. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second. Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to capital projects and community services. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, Rosie, I actually just have a question about something.
Sure.
That I'm just finding out now, so. If anybody ever thinks I do it, everybody, including myself. Regarding Resolution 10949.
Yes.
Why is this linked to LA-2022 TV Summit City Phase III and not just the Village Green Pedestrian? What is the LA-220?
I think Mr. Schreger can address that.
Sorry, I had all week to ask you.
No, that's okay for you, Council President. The two letter and then the year is what the DOT assigns it. It's a grant application. LA is, I forgot what that code is.
It's okay.
It's their fiscal year, 2022, that the grant was awarded.
Okay.
And the language here is pretty much verbatim from them, so we just match it fully.
Okay. It just looked a little, I was, what is this TV thing? And I was just want to make sure it wasn't an error. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on. This is Resolution ID 10949, the approval to submit an award extension request for LA-2022 TV Summit City Phase III Village Green Pedestrian Safety Project to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Sorry, just making sure it's worded right. So for those of you, for education for the public, the city received a transit village grant from NJDOT in the amount of $650,000 for the final upgrade, final phase of the upgrades to the Village Green. This project was to be awarded on January 27th. And unfortunately, at the last minute, it was brought to the attention of the NJDOT that this property abuts a known historic area, and they've requested that the project be submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office for approval of the project. This submission has taken place, and although it's not anticipated for anything, anything received from the historic preservation would alter the project. NJDOT is recommending we hold on awarding the contract if we do not receive approval beforehand. I'd like to move this resolution.
And I will second. Okay. Council comments?
I'd just like to make one comment as I mumbled through that entire resolution. I think it's really important for everybody to understand that the Maybe Playground and the Village Green Transit Project sort of go hand in hand. So it's going to be really important that we finish this project, and some of those costs that are in this project, you know, there's lighting involved, there's sidewalks. So we really are going to prioritize in getting this project done first, and then Maybe Playground second. It's just the way that it makes the most sense. And Director Schreger, I don't know if you have any comments, but, you know, the look of the Village Green is going to provide a lot more accessibility in general. So for those of you who didn't know, I just thought it might be interesting fact.
Okay. Any other council comments? All right. Public comment? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number two, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, this is Resolution ID 10895, which will authorize 2024 legal services in excess of $17,500, affordable housing, council not to exceed $40,000, and I would like to move this resolution.
And I would second that. Any council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Sorry. Just one second. I know, I'm just trying to find it. I'm not.
It's staying till midnight for the planning board. I think that's what it is.
Yeah, it might be staying. I just want, sorry, I'm just trying to find it in my packet here.
Take your time.
One second. City Forester 107. Did I skip it?
Number four is the 10894.
It's the City Forester, right?
Number three.
Number three, sorry. 10748.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find it in my packet. I didn't print it out. I'm just trying to find it. Rosie, what packet page is that on? What packet, what page in the packet is that on?
Here, I have it on.
I just lost it.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, 49. I just want to look. I want, the reason I'm taking an extra second is because the, the number was off in the agenda, and I just want to make sure it's corrected. And I'm not sure if it was.
Oh, it, yes, it was.
Is it new version up there?
Yeah. It's 60, I'll tell you. Just give me one second. I don't know if it's in that one, though. Is it in there on that one?
I'm just trying to run the numbers in my head because I got it. Just give me one second. Sorry.
Here it is. Is it 64 or 65? I don't know. It's page 58, I think. Okay. I got it.
It was inserted. That's why you won't see pages on there.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think it was page 50 or 48, something like that.
Right. I just want to, I just want to confirm that it's not 110,000, it's 65,000.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the, the one that's right there with showing the changes on your desk?
That's the one.
That's the one that's in the packet on the website.
Perfect. Sorry about that. Okay. Yeah. This is Resolution ID number 10894, which will authorize, sorry, I apologize, ID number 10748, which will authorize 2024 City Forester Services not to exceed 100, this is why I'm, not to exceed $65,000. In our agenda packet this morning, it was $110,000. I authorize, this will authorize 2024 City Forester Services not to exceed $65,000. I moved, I'd like to move this resolution.
I second. Okay. Council comments?
I do have a quick question. So that amendment, it's a guaranteed the grant money that, I think you're accounting for the grant money that is taking part of that away, right? Is that guaranteed grant money?
No. So this is only for the City Forester to work for the City of Summit. So that's nine hours on Thursdays, and then that is, so it's $55,000 for the City of Summit, for him to work for the City of Summit, and then it's $10,000 for the board applications. And then the grant that, the name of the grant escapes me, Michael. The tree inventory, the tree inventory, the window.
Spring, spring planting and things?
No, it's actually just a specific grant that we have applied for and received about a year and a half ago.
Urban forestry, state brand.
And we, that was initially lumped in here, but some conversations that we had within the department, we're going to do that at a separate meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I can explain it to you in excruciating detail if you have any more questions.
Any other council comments? Okay. Public comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is ID 10894, which will authorize 2024 City Planner and Zoning Support Services to Burgess and Associates not to exceed $65,000. I would like to move this resolution.
I second. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five?
Number five. This is ID 10913, which will authorize 2024 Sewer Consultant Engineering Services to CP Engineers Architecture and Environmental Services not to exceed $200,000. I would like to move this resolution.
I second. Council comments? Public comments?
The only thing I'd say, Council President, is I think that this is a topic that nobody ever talks about, the sanitary sewer. So at some point throughout the year, I would like to, you know, Director Schreger is going to be educating me a lot more on the, on the sanitary, on the sewer, and perhaps sometime we'll give a presentation this year to the public.
Okay. No comments tonight, or do you have anything to say?
No, not tonight.
No.
Nope. Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number six?
This is ID 10734, which will authorize the execution of agreements, snow removal, and lighting reimbursement to the Summit East condos and provide reimbursement for future years. I would like to move this resolution.
I second. Any council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. On to the consent agenda. Before we vote on the consent agenda, does anyone, Mr. Miniger, Councilman Miniger, have anything to pull out? Okay. Then do I have a motion?
Maybe I have to pull something.
Would you have something to pull out?
I'm kidding. I don't think so. I'm looking at it real quick. Let me just make sure.
Actually, okay. Anybody have anything to pull out for the consent agenda?
I actually have one question for Rosie.
Yes.
In 10933, an ID under finance under the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Why is it, why does it not have a, it just says authorized payment of bills and payroll, but there's no dollar amount?
Because when we generated, we didn't have the number.
Oh.
Oh, wait. A number seven?
Yeah.
I have 1.841.
So it was probably put on, my version didn't have it, but maybe it's on the website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. When we pulled it down, we added the number because it just, when we get the bill and the total, the bills in the total, it sometimes doesn't coincide with when we're generating.
Okay, because I have $1,841,572.
It should be on the title of the resolution.
Yeah, and 10 cents. That's what, that's in our packet?
Yeah. Well, that's what she's saying when she fixed the forester. I think that. Or does that affect it?
Maybe.
It is in the packet.
Yeah.
It's in the packet. Yeah. That's fine. Okay. Yeah. All right. Made me look. All right. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
All right. Excellent. Any comments from the council? All right. Any public comments?
I'll make a comment real quick, if you don't mind. I know, I just want to, I just want to talk about the planning board. I have one quick comment.
Go ahead.
I have one quick comment. We had our first planning board last night. We appointed Mr. Zucker as the chair and Ms. Jennifer Ballson-Alvarez as the vice chair. So the meeting was very productive, very late, was until about 11:45, so we certainly learned a lot. And.
We did, we have to vote on the consent agenda. We have to vote on the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, no. I was asking the public if they had a, the public has, didn't want to say anything.
Nope, I'm done.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I'm going to open it up to council comments. Council.
Thank you. But I did just want to say congratulations to the chair and the vice chair. And thank you, Director Schreger, for working so hard in capital projects. And we will have our meetings on Thursdays to work on our goals for that committee and agenda items, and it's going really well. So I'm looking forward to giving you more of an update at the next meeting. Thank you. Sorry for my craziness.
No, that's all right.
So I just wanted to make a comment about abstentions. At our last meeting, Councilman Vartan criticized a rule change that the council adopted, which allowed members of this body to abstain from votes. The council had previously prohibited abstentions. I just want to let the public know that I understand the potential issues he raised, and I've thought a lot about them, and I have not changed my mind. I actually did some additional research and confirmed that even if we wanted to forbid abstentions, we can't. First, according to Roberts Rules of Order, a council member cannot be compelled to vote. Second, under federal common law requiring a council member to vote is, in effect, compelling one to speak, and that violates the Constitution. You see, the freedoms protected by the First Amendment against state action include both the right to speak freely and the right to refrain from speaking at all. One court agreed with Councilman Vartan, as do I, that there can be no doubt that a representative who consistently dodges difficult or controversial issues by not voting on them does a disservice to his or her constituency. However, that same court confirmed in our government system, the proper remedy for such behavior lies within the electorate. Moreover, a person's status as a legislator